A lot faster with the paper.
I'd like to call to order the regular Woodland Park City Council meeting for Thursday, September the 20th, 2012. And Cindy, if we can have a roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Turley?
Present.
Gary Brevetto?
President.
Terry Harrison?
Here.
Carol Harvey?
Here.
John Schaefer?
Here.
Eric Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
And if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I like to welcome everybody that's here tonight? It looks like, I don't know, should I get concerned because there's a big turnout for the meeting tonight? Hopefully it's all good stuff. We're going to start out with a few ceremonies and presentations and things like that. And the first is going to be a presentation by Austin Russell. Austin is one of our Woodland Park High School seniors, and he attended the Colorado Municipal League Conference in June. Several of us on council were there. This is an opportunity for us on council to really get a lot of training, and so there's different subjects and things. And we're really pleased that Austin could be with us. And so tonight, he's going to give us a report. Welcome, Austin.
All right. My name's Austin. I went to the Colorado Municipal League Conference with the city council this year in Breckenridge. During the conference, they had a bunch of little sessions that you could attend that would, you know, train and enlighten all the people that had attended. So here are the sessions that I attended. And while I took away a lot from each and every session, there was one main thing that I took away in general that I'd like to communicate to you through a little bit of a story. I also threw up a bunch of pictures that I got a lot of them off of the website for CML, and I took a couple of them. But I'd like to tell you about my average day. So I wake up in the morning, and I flip on my light, and instantly, a light fills the room. I get out of my bed, and I go straight to my shower. I turn on the faucet, and water comes streaming out. I get ready for school, and I leave my house, pulling out of the driveway onto a newly paved road that had just been put in place. I drive down the road to the corner where I see a stop at a stop sign, turning right onto Rampart Range Road. Now, I get to another stop sign where I see a crosswalk and a crossing guard standing there, marching people across the street, making sure everyone's safe. I continue down the road to the next stop sign, where I see a small accident has occurred. At the scene of the accident, the police have arrived, and, you know, the ambulance and the fire department are instantly there. There's not a second wasted that all these things haven't already arrived. I attend the rest of the school day, leaving off campus for lunch. I go off campus, and I drive down the main road through Woodland Park. I can notice on the side of the road, in the median, all the decorative trees and floral arrangements down the center of the road. And I continue on to the rest of my day. At the end of the day, I go hang out with my friends at Meadow Wood Sports Complex. And all these things I do, I do every single day. Well, you know, I don't always see an accident, and I mean, that was kind of an exaggeration. And I don't always go to Meadow Wood, but all these things couldn't be possible without the municipalities of Woodland Park. And that, I didn't really understand until I attended the conference. And attending the conference, I kind of got to see how all these things come together because of the municipalities. And it really, you know, most people don't look at that. And it was really cool to see how everything comes together like that. And I just had no idea. I do those things every single day, and it's all the behind-the-scenes work. But there was one conference I attended in particular, that I attended with Mr. Turley. We went to, it was called Beyond Beyonce. It was a youth council where we got to see a whole bunch of youth councils from around the state had come together and made a presentation to let everyone know about the conference. And I thought this was a really neat idea. I mean, we have our student council within the high school, and they do a lot of community service projects, but there's not a place actually devoted just for helping the community. And so I really enjoyed the idea of how they got a group of high school kids, or, you know, they even had some, I think there was a group that had elementary students that they got together, and they just helped their entire community. Under involvement and objective, they have a list of things that some of the places tried to accomplish. Oftentimes, they worked with the park and recreational group. They had, you know, seven to 22 members, some of them like in small cities, and others were much, much larger. They had funding from the city, often from $500, to there was one that had $8,000 came from the city each year. They meet once or twice a month, and it's like an elected position, you know, you have to run again. I just thought that was a really neat idea, and I was just, you
I'm going to interrupt you while you're on that. That was on my list. It's still on my list, but I think it just got moved up my list tonight.
All right. And then, something I've noticed about the Colorado Municipal League Conference in general is how important it actually is for, you know, everyone to communicate, and all the municipalities throughout Colorado to come and share and encourage and support each other. Because maybe in Vail, they had a problem that we're having now, and they already found the solution. And it was really cool to see how they came together and solved that. And also, what seemed to be the buzzword around CML was networking. Everyone seemed to want to get to connect with everyone and, you know, communicate ideas throughout the cities. And I thought that was just really cool. All right. And I would just like to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to participate in the Colorado Municipal League. I hope you guys continue to do the program. I feel it was very important to, you know, I just enjoyed it a lot. It was very educational. All right. Thank you.
Don't leave. Don't leave. So can we give you one of our Woodland Park pens? Do you have one?
I do not.
Well, you're going to.
Okay.
And I will go ahead.
Let me get up so that it goes out on.
I will also add that not only did Austin attend, but Austin's father attended that week also. So it was a really nice opportunity to spend some time and do that. So here's a, we'll call it a mayor's pen, but a Woodland Park pen for you. Here's one for your dad. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
It's really great to see young men like Austin. And we have quite a few of these young folks in our community that are involved. And I'm making some headway as mayor. It's just, as everybody knows, you know, this summer's been kind of crazy. But I spent some time at Gateway Elementary this week, had a meeting with the principal at Woodland Park High School. And so we're starting to, you know, lay some groundwork to see if we can't do some more things between the city and the youth in our community and the school system. And, you know, really proud of Austin and the fact that he was able to attend this. And speaking of high schools, our next presentation is by our new athletic director at Woodland Park High School, Michael DeWolfe. And Michael's only been with us at the high school for...
Going on two months now.
Going on two months.
Started first day of August, so.
So please introduce yourself, and tell us a little bit about. The floor is yours. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. My name's Michael DeWolfe. I'm the new athletic director at Woodland Park High School, also acting as an assistant principal as well. And, you know, happy to be here in the town of Woodland Park. So my purpose of being here tonight is to kind of welcome the council members and representing athletics at Woodland Park High School. And I've got a few gifts for you, you guys, the council members from the Woodland Park Athletic Program. And kind of want to encourage you guys to come on out and see what we're all about, the athletic programs. We've had a great start to our season. We offer, let's see if I can get this right. I always seem to forget a sport, but we've got a lot of sports going on this fall. Football, of course, is our big one. Volleyball, right now, we have a game against Harrison. Tonight's a big night for us. We've actually, we're running four different sports tonight. So we had C-Team football playing tonight. We have our volleyball, all three levels of volleyball playing right now. When I left the gym, our varsity girls were winning against Harrison, and our younger, two lower-level C-Team and JV had just won. We have a softball game tonight, and they've won that one soundly, run ruled them and finished it early. And then, we're also, right now, just starting a soccer match, youth night, Parks and Rec night at our soccer match. So kind of got a lot of things going on. So in addition to those four sports that I just named, our cross-country team, who is going to run in a meet on Saturday, I'm trying to remember, I think, I believe in Fountain Valley, Fountain Valley Schools. And then, our golf, men's golf team, they just had their regional tournament yesterday. And unfortunately, we didn't qualify any golfers who could play at state. There's a couple more tournaments just to have them to play in the next couple of weeks, but golf season's pretty much over now. So the fall's a busy time of year for us. And again, I'd like to encourage the council members to come out and support the Panthers. And if there's anything we can do, as an athletic program, I can do as the athletic director, to help out the city council, Mayor Turley has my phone number. I'm on the website, and certainly feel free to give me a call, shoot me an email anytime, and we'll do what we can do to help out. I know we have a great partnership with the Parks and Rec Program, as we host a lot of our soccer matches and all of our varsity baseball games over at Meadow Wood Park. And that's a great partnership that I'm trying to grow even more to kind of share facilities between the two different recreation. So let me see, I've got some gifts here for our city council members, so let me kind of pass some things out if I can take a few minutes.
Well, before you do that, while you're still there, I'd like to say a couple of words. You're being new to the community. I met your wife, and I think you have, how many kids?
A daughter. One daughter. She's a seventh grader at the middle school.
Met them the other night, and that was very good. Do want to welcome you to our community. I think you're kind of seeing what a wonderful place Woodland Park is, and hopefully, you know, that will continue for you. Would just emphasize, I think, the importance of sporting events for our kids, the activities, the team. So many people just don't necessarily really think about the teamwork that's developed, and how important that is in laying a groundwork and a framework for them for the future. And so I'd like to thank you for being here, and, you know, hopefully that relationship will grow even more in the future. Our city manager, Dave, had a nice little picture on the Woodland Park City's Facebook page of the moose that was over running around. And so that was good job, David, in posting that. And he had some comment about the Sierra Stallions running away from the field tomorrow night. So I thought that was pretty good. And while you're here, that football game is at 7:00 PM tomorrow night?
Yes, sir.
The team that we're playing is, in fact, the Sierras, where Coach Roscom came from.
Yes.
And so we would really like to see a good turnout tomorrow night, and we'd really like to see a good win against his former team.
Yeah. Hopefully, Coach isn't going to spot Sierra 14, 13 points like he did last night, or last Friday night. And that'll make things go a little bit smoother for us. Because, you know, he's got a good squad, and he's done a great job developing those kids. And, you know, we're really excited for what the football team can bring. But, you know, all the sports right now are doing really well and representing the city well. And we like to think of ourselves as the face of Woodland Park. You know, the high school athletic programs, you know, are what a lot of people think about. And we want to really, you know, not only host great events when we have opponents come up to our place, you know, but make Woodland Park a fun place for teams to go, except for in the outcome. You know, when they go home losers, that's kind of our goal. We want to make them feel welcome, you know, and really look forward to playing here, but not like going home when we get done. So that's kind of our plan and my mission as the new athletic director.
Okay.
Thanks for having me.
Goodies.
Pretty darn active. So I asked our booster president to hook me up to support these car stickers or fridge stickers. Well... Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager as well.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I like all that stuff.
Isn't that pretty?
Just to encourage you guys to, you know, have a nice, comfortable place to sit.
Thanks, sir.
Some nice Woodland Park keychain lanyards.
Wow. You're doing better. Well, don't tell Gus I said that.
I am. I'm telling him. There's not a lot of things I'm doing better than Gus right now, so.
Yeah, those are big shoes to fill with Gus.
They are. But I'm glad he's still around. That's amazing. T-shirts, although our gal said she kind of hooked you up with some already.
Yeah, I'm a pretty good seller.
We're going to see if we've got the sizes, okay? Got a medium for Carol.
Just so you'll know, I just spent, I was over the other day with the boosters club and kind of saw the things that they had that I really liked. And of course, you know, I have to get kind of extra, extra large sizes. But we got some stuff, and I'll just take that opportunity to thank Paula Levy for all she does in the community, and she took care of me. And now I have, this says Woodland Park, but I have one of these for the Panthers and all kinds of goodies.
I would like to ask, Aaron, though, are we exceeding the amount for the ability to accept guests? Are you positive?
You are not.
Well, I forget what proposition, what's it? Four?
Forty-one.
A member.
Hopefully you're right. If you're not, mix and match, and...
These are the discount prices.
So we're okay to this, but if he buys his dinner, we're in trouble.
I had a car sticker for you since I didn't...
Is this something we should expect at every meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Really appreciate it. Thanks. Welcome to the community. Hey, one question. Do you have a Woodland, hey, Michael? Michael, do you have a Woodland Park pen?
I do not.
Oh, you do now.
This will balance it out.
I hear at least it was hard to come by.
Yeah, you are. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Nice meeting you guys.
Thanks.
Okay. We'll see you tomorrow night.
Definitely. Glad to see everybody there.
So next on our agenda is, if you remember, a few weeks ago, we just had a really great event in town. And so we're going to, David Butterey and a few folks are going, we're going to recognize the people that really made the Pro Challenge Bicycle Race happen. So, David, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like for Mike Perini to join me at the podium. And we'll get Suzanne to dim the lights real quick. And we've got some slides we want to share with you about the Pro Challenge, and then Mike's going to have the privilege of introducing the organizing committee. Just a touch of history, the USA Pro Challenge has been in Colorado now two years. And even when it was coming for the first year, the city of Woodland Park, through Beth Colesley, wanted to have a presence on the Pro Challenge. We weren't successful the first year. The second year, we were quite successful. We had a sprint line, and we had the event come through Woodland Park. You all know that Beth left the city about March, April. So we dedicated this event to her, and I think it was, she was quite pleased with the outcome. So let me share a few slides with you, and then Michael can introduce those folks who really made this happen. We had some great events for kids, a challenge course at the north end of Memorial Park, safety. We handed out some helmets. You can see the course there. Northeast Teller County Fire Protection in Cripple Creek provided the fire trucks to hang the flag. Some great comments associated with having this flag. The town got ready. Lions Park just sprang to life. The VFW and American Legion got the flags out very early in the morning. And there's the ladies from the chamber who are already thrilled with the outcome of the event. These pictures were taken by Bruce Vanderpool. And businesses got involved. You can see Ben eating and the sign behind him. So there were numerous businesses that had great block parties going on as well. Look at that highway. Isn't that amazing? Look at the speed sign, the little yellow sign. See, it says 16 miles an hour. That's the lead vehicle coming through at 16. And I just, another picture of everybody starting to come through. The crowd is getting energized. This was the sprint line. They showed up with a couple of minutes to go. There were all kinds of costumes. That is not Mike Perini, despite what you might think. Nor is it Mayor Turley. But there were all kinds of people dressed up, having fun. And the excitement built. See the young soldier behind the car? Our partnership unit provided 28 soldiers to help us with crowd control. Colorado State Patrol began coming through. Lights were flashing. Everything started going faster and faster and faster, except for the slides. Okay, look, there's the breakaway. Look at the speed limit sign. It's telling them to slow down. They're saying, no way, we got to go faster, faster. And look at the crowd. And here they come. This is the Pel, whatever?
Peloton.
Peloton, you know, the big mass of humanity. And we wondered if people would have an idea of what was going on in front of them. Look at the guy on the left. I think he just saw the US flag hanging over this mass of Woodland Park humanity. And they kept coming. And people cheered them on. And the excitement continued to grow, and it was just an absolute hoot. And look how close they were to folks standing on the side of the road. And still they came. And there they are. And they were going so fast, it blew the whole speed limit sign out.
That's a really good...
But look at all those riders. And what was impressive was, look at the number of people that are watching them. And then watch this last guy, the last guy on the motorcycle. Look what he is carrying. Look at all those spare tires. Isn't that amazing? It was a fun event. Some estimates say that we had 5,000 or so people on the street watching. We don't know that for sure, but it sounds like a pretty decent number. But I can tell you that all the folks I talked to really had a good time. And this could not have happened had it not been for Mike Perini and the team that he pulled together, and he's going to introduce those folks.
Well, thank you, David. And thanks, Mayor and city council, for being able to just take a couple of minutes and really recognize the men and women that helped put this on. As you all know, to be able to handle an event like this, it takes great organization. And us, the two leaders, David and I, we just made sure we picked the right people, and they did an awesome job. You know, when Beth wanted to do this, she really was trying to put Woodland Park on the map, to be able to have an opportunity globally so that people knew that Woodland Park was a great place to come and visit, and maybe, you know, live here at some point. And then, unfortunately, we had the fire, and this race became even more important to our city. Because, as you all know, from many of the media reports around the globe, it looked like Woodland Park had also met its demise, as unfortunately some of the areas in Colorado Springs. So this race became even more important to us because of the strategic value of showing the world during the live television coverage and tape coverage. 110 countries heard numerous times, "Woodland Park, Woodland Park." They saw the beautiful landscape. They saw that we did not here feel the burn, that we had the heat. And I was very impressed to have the opportunity to help David in chairing this. But I want to spend the next few minutes, because I know you have a busy meeting, and that is to recognize the talent behind the team. And many of these people are here tonight. I'm going to, I was going to have them come up and say their name, but some of them are shy, so I will do it for them. But, and if they're not here, that's because they're doing something else in the city tonight. But if you're here, please stand up. Jerry Fritz. Jerry was here. Jerry ran our operations. I've already mentioned David, who helped co-chair this. Chief Larson, chief, thank you for your support. We had Cindy Keating and Kelly Simkins. They ran our festival. All those cool things that we did. You know, this event was all about our town, because we really couldn't go anywhere for a while, so let's do something that kept us here and was fun. Debbie Miller is here from the chamber. She and Sue Griswold, they did an incredible amount of outreach to not only chamber members, but people that were businesses and community around the area, just to let folks know just what was going to happen on that day. You can't do this without a huge volunteer team and Erica from State Farm. Erica came, and she stepped to the plate. She came up with those red shirts that everybody could see, and we appreciate, Erica, what you did. We had Erin Merbella. Erin is one of our local celebrities. She helped with the liaison with the statewide pro cycling group. She was one that helped us get on that international television coverage. Jim Halloran, Jim, are you here somewhere? Okay. And he was our state liaison.
He's probably out working.
Probably out working, state liaison. We had John Gomes, Mark Robalt, Melinda Trisselli. Melinda ran the media, the VIP area. She did the sponsorship. She did a great job. Norm Steen, Norm is not here tonight, but I have not seen a county commissioner work as hard as he has done and is doing. He ran our logistics. Paul Magnuson had the cycle shop. He had his own fun stuff going on down there. The hospital, we had Sherry Shogan, Shelley Perkowski, Erin Randolph, and Kisa Fiero, a young intern. And those are just the core of the committee. There are hundreds of volunteers that I don't know all their names. I want to salute them. The sponsors, we couldn't have done this without our sponsors, and our participating businesses. We had businesses in town that decided, you know, the road's going to be closed for a while. What can we do to make that a positive? And I think we can learn a lot from that. And I reach out to those businesses. And most importantly, our community. From the leadership that you all showed, all the way down to those that came to those activities and events. Movie night, to the opening ceremonies, having the high school band. I mean, I've lived in this town for 10 years, and I have moved 43 times. And on that day, that was the most special moment I've ever felt in the community anywhere in the world. And that's because you all were there as citizens, and you, and you made this well done. And it is a job well done, and I hope, Mayor and city council members, that we will do something like this in the future. There is an after-action report that we put together. Yes, there were some things we would do better next time, but we did, we were very critical. And there is a video that we're working on to show those folks who might want to come to a mountain town, can you do something large and cool, and can you organize it? You bet we can, and we proved it back last month. Mayor, thank you very much.
And I have pins for... Now I have to ask, do you have a pin?
I do not. I've not...
I can't believe that.
I don't. Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
That's cool. Thank you.
Yep. I assume... See, I got a hug. You were out there working too. That was the assumption I made. How did you have... You're kidding. Oh, my goodness. You're welcome.
Did you hear what I told you? I told you, these are, if you need more, let me know. And if there's too many, I want 'em back. My city manager makes me watch those things. And we do. And that's a good thing. Again, I will thank Mike and David and the team. And it truly was a fun day. I was out there the whole day, and it was very good. I think Eric was out there. I think a bunch of us were. So let's move on. Next is a consideration of an appointment to the Planning Commission. And for that, we're gonna turn to Cindy.
Thank you. There remains one vacancy on the Planning Commission, which occurred earlier this year when Diane Majway submitted her resignation. So pursuant to your policy, we did advertise for this open position on the website, Cable Channel 10, et cetera, and also on Facebook. And on September 12th, Dan Vogel submitted an application for this position. Dan is with us this evening. You all have a copy of his application. Let you know that the term of office for this position will expire on January 1st of 2015. Dan, I'd like to have you come up, say hello to the council.
Welcome, Dan, and really appreciate your making that application. Planning Commission is a very important organization in our town and having citizens on that. And the better that, said this before, but the better that Planning Commission can work through issues, the easier it makes our job on City Council. So from our perspective, greatly appreciated, but welcome. Please, just for the record, state your name and address and...
Yeah, Dan Vogel. I'm 660 Chipmunk Drive, here in Woodland Park.
We have your application. If there's anything you would like to tell us, or...
You know, I've lived in the town for, I guess, a little over two years. And we've been building up here for, since 2007. And we've never felt such a sense of community in any other place. And I've had the opportunity to work with Scott and Sally. And I just really want to be able to offer a helping hand. So anyway, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Dan from council? Bob?
Yeah, on the iPad version at least, I don't have his application. Is it at the very end or something?
No, it's not included because it has some protected information in it. And so it was delivered to you. It's got his phone number and his signature, and that's working. So it's on your dais?
Gary, you usually have a question.
Oh, yeah. I have questions for the VODA guy. When we lost the student, I wanted to pick on him. I should've told you that, but...
I'm sorry.
Dan, have you been attending Planning Commission meetings, other than being there?
I've, no, I have not. I've, I keep, I kinda keep up with it, though.
So you are a builder and...
Yep.
Gone through the process on occasion?
Gone through the process on occasion, yes. Absolutely.
Carol?
Thank you for stepping up, having served on the Planning Commission. It can be both lots of fun and lots of challenges. But my question would be, have you made yourself familiar yet with the comprehensive plan?
I have. I've been, I've been reading through it, yes.
Super. That's your bible, so.
Great.
Study it hard.
I will.
Others?
I'd just make a comment, and I know Dan, and I think he'd make a great addition to the Planning Commission. So thank you for stepping up and throwing your name in the hat.
Right. Thanks, Eric.
Any others? Then I guess if not, we'll entertain a motion.
We will.
Eric?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Dan's application to serve on the Planning Commission.
Second?
Why, just accepting his application, excepted being on it?
Accepting and being on it, sure.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And Cindy, we'll take a vote.
Brevetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. And I would like to administer the open office.
Be careful, Dan, what you ask for. You might be up here somewhere.
Yeah.
You can ask your fellow.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dan Vogel...
I, Dan Vogel.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado...
And of the state of Colorado.
The charter and ordinances...
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Woodland Park...
Of the city of Woodland Park.
And that you will faithfully perform...
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the Office of Planning Commissioner...
The duties of the Office of Planning Commissioner.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. Good job.
Just need a signature here. Actually, I need two. Sign that one first. And sign that one, and you can take it home. And I think Sally has a gift for you.
Oh, I bet Sally does have a gift.
There's your reading material.
Dan, thank you, thank you very much. We, it's greatly appreciated. Let's give Dan a round of applause. So we'll move on to the next item. And this is concerning Carol Harvey. She's been our liaison to the Downtown Development Authority the last several months. And for that, I'm gonna turn to Cindy for some discussion.
Thank you. The City Council, by law, as it's stated in the Colorado revised statutes as it relates to the Downtown Development Authority statutes, must have one member of their body serve on a DDA board. And it is my understanding that Carol is needing to resign from the board. I let her speak to that directly. And so this body needs to accept that, and then appoint someone else to take her spot.
So I am tendering my official resignation from the board. I wanted to say that the board has such an important part of our ability as a city to grow responsibly. And even more important, that a City Council member be part of that process. I am so glad that that is required by law, actually. The board currently meets once a month at a regular meeting at 07:30 in the morning. And generally speaking, as a full-time employee, I can make that meeting with no problem. But the board has a lot of other important business that needs to be conducted outside of that regular meeting time. And I cannot always meet that requirement. And I think it would be really unfortunate for the council and for the city itself if we didn't have a full-time council member who could dedicate time to the board's business. Discussed it briefly with Gary Brevetto. I think we'll come to that point where we'll nominate a new member. I would suggest, if it were all possible, that maybe we do rotate council members out after every six months, so each of us could understand that process. I don't know if that's feasible. Sometimes continuity is more important than allowing all of us to learn the process. But the board does have important business to do, and the council needs to be involved. So thank you for having given me the opportunity, and I wish the board well. And they do have a voice in the court here.
Really appreciate that, Carolyn. For those of you that know Carolyn, what she's been doing in the city. I mean, she's been on council since the April election, but before that, her involvement with the Planning Commission and her leadership there, you know, greatly appreciated. And it can be a challenge sometimes in balancing one's work, especially Carol works down in the Springs, out of Peterson, and that can be a bit of a challenge. She's involved with Homeland Security and different things that is very important for us as a city, a state, our country. And so appreciate your giving that a shot and doing what you did over the past several months, about six months almost, so. And Gary, you're willing to step up and...
Well, nobody would nominate other people. I don't want to be the only one.
Do we actually go through a nomination process?
Yes, that's how it's been done.
I'll nominate Gary.
I lost control. Any discussion?
I have something to comment on that. I think, you know, Gary backs up, well, let's see, I forget the other board you're on, but he's also my alternate on the Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments. But I think, you know, Gary's here in town, spends a lot of time here, and, you know, hopefully he'll be available for those. I think he brings some insights and things that will be useful on the DDA. And appreciate Gary being willing to step up to that. So, any other discussion?
No, but I did like Carol's idea, and I agree. But it's my understanding that the mayor of council can attend all of the, all of the DDA functions that go on, even into the executive session if I'm gonna have...
The first part of your statement is absolutely correct. We do post the DDA meetings as a public meeting for the City Council. And that way, if the council wants to show up, there's three or more of you there. We don't have to worry about it being posted. The second part of your statement is not true. The DDA, the Colorado statutes absolutely talk about the executive session with the DDA board being limited to the board and those folks that are a part of that discussion.
And I normally, you know, when I'm here in a developed, I normally attend the meetings, but do not stay for the executive sessions. And probably sometimes that's a good thing. I mean, there's negotiations going on, and, you know, probably that needs to be, remain with... We have a representative there and needs to stay within that group, so.
A voting representative?
Yes, a voting representative. Absolutely, it is a voting representative. Any other discussion?
I think we should ask Gary if he's game.
Oh, yeah, yeah. For the public record, we need to ask him, and he says yes, but we had chatted previously, so.
So let's have a vote.
Thank you. Motion is to appoint Brevetto to the DDA Board of Directors as City Council Representative. Carlson? Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Brevetto?
Doesn't matter where he's picking up stink, and I'm gonna vote myself.
Give it a big yes.
All right, I'll give it a yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Gary. Appreciate that. And our next item on the agenda was gonna be the presentation by the Woodland Park Aquatics Board. We had a work session before council tonight. And in working through that, came to a conclusion, they did, that there's more work needs to be done. And so they've withdrawn that item from the council meeting for tonight. And with that, Cindy, any additions, deletions, or corrections?
No, sir.
Okay, and for the consent counter, I will turn to Cindy.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the approval of two minutes, two sets of minutes. One for August 16th, one for August 27th. And then approval of the August 2012 Statement of Expenditures. What questions may I answer?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Cindy?
Thank you. Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Brevetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And during tonight's meeting, you're probably seeing some of us up here doing things on a little computer screen. We're actually using iPads. We made the decision, the council did, in conjunction with staff during our goals and objectives meetings, to go to iPads so that we can get the agendas electronically, we can write on them, we can make changes. We don't have to have somebody deliver them out to their house. We can save all that paper and all the scanning that needs to be done to make all that happen. So this is our first formal meeting with these, so we're working through it. But so far, so good. I'll also add that, for me, being on Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments, they've been printing out a stack of materials from me and Melia to me that's about yay-thick. And I can get all that now electronically, and saves postage and all that work. So looking forward to that. And, you know, there's other things that we can do and look up things as we go along and build our folders and everything. So I just wanted you all to know what we're doing when you see us doing that up here. We are focused on the council meeting. And so for the next item is ordinance on initial posting. And for the first one of those, I will turn to Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
This is the first in a series of code amendments that we'll be bringing forward to you guys over the course of the next three to six months. What we're doing is sort of taking advantage of a little bit of a lull in the development review to make some corrections to the code that we've been talking about for sometimes years. And so now we're bringing some of these forward. The first one is relative to multifamily parking. We've noticed for a number of years that our parking requirements are on the high side for multifamily units. And that we've gotten feedback from the development community, those who do a lot of multifamily, that ours are on the high side. And then actually, taking a look at how we compare to many other communities in the region, pretty much brought that to light even more. The chart that we provided on the staff report takes about 10 other communities in the area and shows that Woodland Park has the highest requirements, the most stringent requirements for parking. And also require guest parking on top of that. Not only being a deterrent potentially to multifamily, there's other impacts for providing, requiring too much parking, which is requiring too much pavement and stormwater impacts. All that water runs off of the impervious area into our creeks and contributes to runoff and other negative effects. So what we went about is obviously looking to see what other communities are doing. We started out looking at the town of Monument and Cotta Springs. And we did a little polling of those planners down there to see how their requirements were doing. And they felt that theirs were a little on the low side, so we actually pumped it up over what we were initially gonna go with. And on the page two of the staff report shows what we currently require. Two spaces per every one-bedroom unit, two and a half per two-bedroom, three spaces for three-bedroom units, plus guest parking. Now we're proposing to do one and a half space per one-bedroom unit, two per two-bedroom, and two and a half per three-bedroom unit, and no guest parking. And we went through three work sessions, I believe, two or three work sessions with the Planning Commission to discuss this. And we went through all the pros and cons of these, of this change. And this was the consensus of the commission. There were few that were concerned that we needed to pump up the one-bedroom units and maybe bring down the three-bedroom units. But ultimately, we came to the proposal you see tonight. And then when we were looking through, when I was doing research on other codes, I came across some other codes that have a provision called an alternative parking plan. And so we brought the issue up with the Planning Commission. And the alternative parking plan is a scenario where a developer and applicant brings information to us that proves that the parking requirement, their parking requirement for their development would be lower than what we would require. So we would, that would give them an option to propose something. If it's a staff-level review, the staff would be the one to determine if it's acceptable. If it goes to Planning Commission and council, council would be the one to determine that after Planning Commission review. And we wouldn't do that, you know, lightly. There's requirements, if you look through the ordinance, for providing solid justification for doing that. But we realize that not all the developments are created equal, and there's a good reason to have some flexibility to apply these things more smartly, I guess. Currently, we don't have a mechanism for a parking variance, which a lot of other communities do. And this is just, I think we see this just as another tool, along with off-site parking and joint parking allowances in the code, to be just more responsive to individual development. So that's, this is just a first reading. The staff is recommending that you approve it on initial posting and set the public hearing for October 4th, 2012. A couple changes that we would propose to add to the ordinance. One is an appeal option for if, say, a neighboring property owner didn't agree with our reduction of parking on a project. They could, we were thinking about adding an appeal section. I guess they can, they can appeal it anyway right now, similar to what happened with the hardware store. But that appeal goes to the Board of Adjustment. And so what we're recommending to you tonight is that that appeal be specifically to council, because we think Planning Commission and council would be more appropriate bodies to review those kinds of issues. The Board of Adjustment's more suited for setback variances and height variances, those kinds of things. And then it was noted in one of the comments from one of the council members about, just a suggestion and about what kind of reviews on... And then, it was noted in one of the comments from one of the Council members about, just a suggestion, about what kind of reviews on page two of the ordinance, under E, third paragraph, right now it says, the permission shall be granted by the administrative officer when a request is made concurrently with a ZDP or a site plan review for a permitted use. Those are things that are administrative. And then it says, City Council shall determine when the request is made concurrently with a conditional use permit application. The suggestion was to also add site plan review and PUDs to that, which I think is a good suggestion, and we would propose to add that and bring it back to you next time for the public hearing.
So, that would be added in to what we're reviewing tonight on initial posting, and we will see that in the text when we get the...
Yes, that's correct.
And with that appeal option, are we doing that also?
Yeah, yeah, and the City Attorney brought that up tonight, and I think we just need to talk about how that, where that is best slotted into the code, and we can bring that back to you.
Remember that on initial posting, you're seeing the, what I'll say is the best last draft, and so as we review it, as other people review it, other things come forward, and we certainly have the ability to make those kinds of minor changes, as long as they get published with the public hearing.
Any questions from Council for Scott? Yes, Terry, you had your...
Well, on the appeal part, though, Scott, so they would appeal to Council instead of the Board of Review, is that correct?
That's what Scott suggested.
I guess this question would be for Aaron, would they have, we as a body would probably become quasi-judicial at that time, but the time limit, and would they have a second appeal to still go ahead and take it to, onto court if they, and with the, can we shorten that time limit, that 60-day time limit? I know on the last project that got appealed, it was a considerable amount of money that has cost that project, another year's worth of rent, the construction's going to take place in the winter instead of the summer and stuff, so can we shorten that time limit down to make the process work a little faster?
You cannot shorten the, what is a 30-day time period under state statute?
I think it was 30 days to take it to order review and another 30 days to appeal it if you didn't like their, appeal it to court.
Yeah, the procedure for bringing the appeal to City Council is wholly within Council's prerogative, and that can be built in to the language that we bring back to you. So, that timing could be whatever staff might recommend and what Council might decide on, so that is flexible. The 30 days for appealing the City Council's decision to the district court is not, there's no flexibility there, that remains 30 days as a matter of state law.
Thank you.
The flexibility that we might have in our procedure is relative to the public notice. I mean, we turned it around about as quickly as we could on the hardware store. The requirement is for 15 days, I should know this, 15 days, I believe, but then you have to get in a week early to the paper, so 30 days was about as quick as we could get turning that around. We could shorten up that notice period if we, to make it a little quicker.
I'd be happier if we just eliminated the appeal process.
Eric, you had a question or comment?
I just had a question on the appeal. That would be only, not for what's in the table, but only for applicants to bring forward an alternative plan?
That's the way I would look at it.
No, I, my understanding was the appeal would be for those that were in proximity of the project, who...
I guess they, yeah, I guess they could appeal anything. I don't think it says that it, I have to refresh our memory here, but I think they could appeal, they could appeal it on just about any grounds.
They being the applicant.
Well, the neighbor. I guess the applicant could appeal it as well if they don't like the staff decision. They could appeal it to...
Well, yeah, clearly the, this was my recommendation, and clearly my intention for bringing it up was so that the applicant who is proposing an alternative plan that gets just to an administrative officer level has the opportunity to appeal should the administrative officer turn that down.
Right.
And doing so, you know, helps provide for procedural and protections for that applicant. I don't believe that there need to be, nor does there necessarily have to be a reciprocal appeal for any neighbors, because I don't believe that there is any substantive or procedural rights vested there. Council could decide to do that, however. It'd be my recommendation that what this is, is an appeal for the applicant.
Bob?
I'm looking forward to the chicken regulations coming to the committee. But I did have one question. Was it, did you consider whether you needed to recuse yourself on this, I mean, should?
I did, I talked to the City Attorney about that, and my feeling is, to me, irrespective of whether I'm involved or not on another project that we're going to discuss later in some other business, and I will recuse myself for that, I believe that we, this is the best thing for the community, and seeing a reduction in parking spots and less pavement, less runoff, less creek damage is the way to go.
And advice from Council was that you did not need to recuse yourself for this one, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, just to be clear, my counsel with Councilmember Smith was, there is no conflict if Councilmember Smith believes that he is not making a decision based on his own personal and private interest, and so to the extent that Councilmember Smith can state, which he just has, that the, he would be deciding this on the basis of what was best for the community, answers, in my mind, the concern that I had, and I would leave it then to Council if they, you know, agree or disagree, because your charter does have a provision that says, you know, Council can disagree with that.
Yes, John?
When this new ordinance is passed, and I'm assuming it will, how would it be applied to a project that's underway now, partially complete?
That's a good question.
For example, the Habitat project on Forest Edge Road.
Well, I think that they would have any, every opportunity to come back in and apply for an alternative parking plan approval. It's something that I think you'd have to come back in and request. If it's a permitted use, it would be a staff-level decision if it's, I mean, if it was a conditional use at the time, which I'm not sure if it was, it was a permitted, so in that case, the Habitat would just be a staff-level review.
All right. Thank you. Carol?
Scott, were any other developers included in the discussion, or is this Planning Commission only?
This has pretty much been the Planning Commission. We've talked to some other apartment owners, managers around Woodland Park to try to see what their experience has been, and I think I noted in the staff report, it's kind of hard because we just don't have a whole lot of product out there to really sample, and one of them had low, had plenty of parking spaces around, but it was more suited towards older folks who didn't drive or have cars, so that was the extent, and mostly just talking to the communities to see what their experience was. It was interesting to talk to Cottles Springs, because they'd actually pulled a lot of their, pulled the HOAs of some of their apartment complexes just prior to me calling them, and that kind of gave us the cue to maybe bump up the numbers from what they require, because they said they've had a few issues with not enough spaces in some of their projects.
Scott, I'll, you know, say in looking at this in the staff report, the, you know, getting the information from, you know, comparable towns and even canned towns that aren't comparable, but still provides us with relative information was very good, and I think, you know, added to that. Any other comments or questions from Council? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for ordinance 1169 on initial posting.
Still moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Cindy.
Thank you. Harvey.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Turley.
Yes.
Braveto.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And, Mr. Mayor, just a note that the public hearing will be set for October 4th, and in earlier agenda, it had October 10th.
Okay, and next we'll move on to, we do have one item for a public hearing tonight. It was an item that was tabled at a previous council meeting, and for that, we'll turn to Sally Riley, our planning director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, this is the Gillum Thunderhead zoning request, and in addition to the zoning requests this evening, we're also considering an amendment to the application, the agreement, the annexation agreement, and because you're using your iPads, I'm going to use a little bit different approach. Instead of having a PowerPoint, I'm going to walk you through the staff report, and we'll try that this evening, because we have had many hearings on this case, and you're quite familiar with the property and the process, and so this evening, those two actions will deal with the amendment to the annexation agreement, specifically the Water Section 3A, that was previously approved on July 19th, and then the final hearing on the zoning for a suburban residential zone to this. Since August 2nd, the staff had the opportunity to work with the Gillums and reach agreement and clarity regarding the future use and conveyance of their water rights and well. That language is shown redlined on page two. We were able to negotiate successfully with an amicable arrangement, so that these four paragraphs are very clear. They have a well that is allowed for their dwelling use, and they do have a new number for that well, so I have shown that in green. In that first paragraph, the city does support the use of their well and water rights for a single-family home, which they intend to upgrade the existing cabin to become habitable space. The second paragraph speaks to the fact that if the Gillums decide at any time in the future that they would no longer need to utilize the well, then they will convey those water rights and the well to the city, and at that time pay the applicable tap fees and the water development fee, and that would be paid upon connection. We added those two words to that paragraph in order to tie it down to the actual connection. And then the paragraph, in, next paragraph in red deals with the fact that should the Gillums decide to subdivide into up to three lots, then all three lots will be required to connect to the city's water system at that time and pay the appropriate fees. The last paragraph is that at the time that the Gillums or their successors decide to abandon the well, then the city shall have the right, at no cost to the annexor, of transferring the water and water rights, and of capping or otherwise abandoning the well according to the applicable law. So, that was the amendment that we would like for you to vote on this evening regarding the annexation agreement. Moving on to the zoning proposal, as reviewed previously, this is for the lowest density for a single-family residential within the city that is a suburban residential zone, and that it will be compatible with the surrounding land uses of other single families, the multifamily, and the churches across the street, which are also zoned suburban residential, and that we have provided you a definition of suburban residential, and then the analysis with the support of this zoning being compatible with the comprehensive plan, as well as several goals and objectives in the comprehensive plan, and this is an appropriate location for that type of zoning, and that the city does have the ability to serve this zone and density with our current infrastructure and capacity for these services provided by the city. With that, we recommend for the first motion, that you approve the amendment to Section 3A of the annexation agreement, and then, secondly, after the public hearing, approve the zoning ordinance 1166. The Gillums are here this evening. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
So, are these, we'll have public hearings separate on each one?
The only public hearing you need to have is on the zone.
That's what I thought, okay. Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much for being here. Any questions from Council for Sally and/or the applicant? Carol, you had your hand up first.
So, Sally, the amendment to the annexation, the status quo would have been at annexation, the well would have conveyed to the city, correct?
I, status quo is, yeah.
Without the amendment, the well would have conveyed to the city. So, the amendment allows the applicant to keep the well unless one of two conditions occurs?
That's correct. That's correct. Either they subdivide or they choose to abandon the well, and the subdivision will supersede, I mean, once they do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Bob?
I think that answers most of what I was going to ask, but, so, we're making, in a sense, an exception to the normal rule, which, once a property is annexed, the water rights come to the city. So, from now on, it's, that's not necessarily true. We can, you can annex a piece of property, but the owner would retain the water rights unless he were to develop the property, rezone it, anything like that.
I'll let Erin answer that question in terms of it not necessarily being a hard and fast rule.
Yeah, the two-part question. The first part is, yes, we are varying from some past practices, but not all past practices, and in every instance, whether or not the water rights were conveyed at the time of annexation or deferred to be conveyed at a later time, all of that conforms to the city code. What the city code says is that the annexor shall be prepared to tender those water rights, and so the city always has the ability to take those water rights at such time as the city might decide to take them. Here, the interest that's served by the deferring the conveyance of the water right is clearly the fact that the applicant here has agreed to the lowest density and to go ahead and restrict their properties accordingly.
Sally, has there been other cases in the past where we have not had those water rights conveyed to us? Is this the...
Yes, in fact, the WOMAC annexation, those water rights were not conveyed to us, they were conveyed to the Westwood Lakes Water District. We had a mobile home park that was being served by a current well, those weren't conveyed to us upon annexation, so there are unique times.
Okay. Yes, Terry?
Well, I'd like to ask Kip, I mean, and you probably know, or maybe Sally does, how many parcels of land do we really have left with inside the city limits that have their own well? Do we have a considerable amount of them, or few of them, or...
Within the city limits, very, very few.
I mean, this is...
I mean, there are some that are outside the city limits.
I understand that, but I said inside the city, yeah.
Cummins Tracks, you know, these properties that are just here to the west of this property are served with wells.
Let me shrink that. Inside the little, what do you like to call them, Sally, donut holes? Inside those donut holes?
Uh-huh.
Do the majority of those have their own well?
I have not done an inventory of all the homes in there.
So most likely, this is, this is a rarity.
It is.
Eric, you had a question, comment?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bob?
Sunnywood, I mean, we've got lots of developments that technically, I mean, could logically, geographically fit within Woodland Park. Most of the, one of the huge issues with that, though, is there, the water, their water rights. But if, under this idea, is that we could annex them, but let them keep the water rights and not have to worry about replacing their water distribution systems or anything like that. What would be the difference?
Sunnywood, first of all, the future filings, most of the future filings are served by the city currently with an outside water and wastewater agreement. Filing 1, maybe possibly filing 2, the earlier filings, those are within the water district, forgot the name of it.
Paint Pony.
Paint Pony, thank you. Yeah. So they're, they're not on their own wells. They're on, they have either served by the district or by the city.
Yep.
But, but the same point is, they have water already from a district or a well, not from the city. And so we could annex a property, keep letting them stay with their water district or their well, and still be annexed.
That would be, that would be something that, that would be considered as a part of their application, and each one would be different, but normally, you know, there's a lot of other issues. I mean, I don't want it to be conveyed that it's just the utilities. I mean, there's issues relative to roads and, and, and since I drive Sunnywood every day, I have a pretty good perspective on, on, on that challenge of, of what it would take to make that happen.
You made a statement there, they're either in paint pony, well, or paint pony or on a well, but no, the vast majority aren't on a well, or they're either in paint pony or on the city's water system.
No, for me, it wasn't any difference whether they had a well or were on, in a water district. They had existing water that wasn't provided by the city.
Okay. Any other comments? Discussion? Anything else, Sally?
No, thank you.
Reorganizing my paperwork. I don't have all my cheat sheets here, so at this time, we'll open for public hearing. Anyone have any comments, discussion on this? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Any additional discussion with council? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make one comment. I appreciate all the parties getting together and working out the agreement as it relates to the annexation. I know that was one of the items, I mean, you've been here now three times, I think. So thanks for coming back and getting this worked out with the city. I think this is a good resolution, and we don't do a ton of annexations, so we kind of have to pull out the old one and start from there, so, but thanks for sticking with us and working through those issues. Thank you to staff as well. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that move to amend Section 3A of the annexation agreement, previously approved on July 19th, 2012, as presented in the staff report tonight.
And I will second that. Any further discussion? Cindy, we'll take a vote on that, please.
Thank you. Shaffer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And now moving on to the second part of our discussion and the second motion concerning ordinance 1166. Any additional discussion from council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Having a, a motion and a second on approval of ordinance 1166, we'll take a vote.
Thank you. Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yep.
Harvey?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Very good, and I'll second Eric's comments, you know, appreciate both the applicant and also staff for working together to come up with, you know, a, a good resolution of this issue, so, thank you very much. That being concluded, we'll now move on to new business. If you remember, well, Sally, or Cindy will probably explain that, I'll turn to Cindy for an issue concerning Colorado Springs Christian School.
Thank you. Speaking of good resolutions, I'd like to remind you that on July 19th, we presented the council with an amendment on the city sales tax code concerning meals at schools, noting that Colorado Springs Christian School has been remitting sales tax since they were, since their campus opened, and also noting that the RE2 school district has not. Council discussed refunding the money to CSCS and also noted that the money was not paid directly by CSCS, but rather by the consumers. And it was suggested that perhaps the city contact CSCS. On August 2nd, council approved the amendment to the city's sales tax code, which exempted meals served at private or public K through 12 school systems. On August 31st, the city received a petition requesting the refund of the sales tax paid to CSCS. It was from the principal and the president of the PTO at CSCS. The petition includes 54 signatures of parents of CSCS students, representing well over 50% of the parents who currently have or have had children attending the school. The total amount to refund is $1,307.47. The request from the PTO president and the principal is that these funds be used directly for the parent-teacher organization. So presenting this resolution, kind of as directed, we're looking for council's concurrence to get this money back into the hands of the PTO at Colorado Springs Christian School. What questions may I answer?
Eric?
Well, I'd just like to make a statement as the husband of the PTO president for Colorado Springs Christian School. I hope that council will support this. I think it's appropriate and fair, given the fact that they've, parents have paid for the last several years, and, and at the other schools have not. I think we did the right thing in August to go ahead and clean up the code, and I know that this money will be put to good use for things there at the school. So I hope the other council members will support this.
Carol?
I'm just curious at how they came to this number. Was it prorated on individual family student enrollment? How did you come up with the number?
It's the amount of money that the school paid to the, to the city.
The school paid, not the individual parents.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. It was called, the, the, the way the structure is at CSCS for their meals, it does, it's filtered through the school just like it is at the high school, how it would be. So there were records there at the school that showed what that, those payments were. And my estimate, with help from Kelly, was about one and a half times this. So it was the same order of magnitude, so it confirmed what we thought was about the amount that we owed them. But I think the record, the record speaks for the amount.
How then do you refund tax money and award that to an organization like the PTO?
Well, that's what they requested, and it, it made sense to us. There would be no way that we could possibly get it to, into the hands of each individual taxpayer. And as I spoke with Ms. Smith on different opportunities, she offered up the idea that if the existing parents, and as many parents as they could reach from, since the school's been here, would sign a petition, would that be a reasonable approach to get the money into the hands of the, of the people that they wanted it to go to? And that's what she did, and that seemed acceptable to us, and that's why we're bringing it to you. So there's, I don't believe there's any way we could get it to every single taxpayer, but the majority of the people who contributed said, we would, we'll allow you to use our tax money for the, for the good of the PTO.
And, and that's my question. I'm assuming that that is a legal transfer.
The city council, there isn't anything that restricts the city council, so you can do with this what you would like to do with it. Remember, you have all the powers with regard to your taxing power, unless your charter restricts you from doing something, and there is no restriction that I'm aware of. It's not that dissimilar from instances in which other cities have dealt with, or other tax-collecting jurisdictions, special districts, have dealt with the need to refund in the event that they've run over their authority to collect tax, say, under Tabor. You know, there is no requirement for how that refund happens. I can remember the city of Lafayette that I represented as city attorney at one point had to refund under a Tabor overage, and they decided to give everybody a free day at their municipal recreation facility. So, I mean, the, the council really has, has wide latitude to decide how, if they want to do this and, and how they want to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Terry?
Well, I really have to agree with Eric, and I think it's, it's a great thing that we did to clean it up. It took the grocery tax literally away from, out of our schools, the three cents on, on food. And, and I'm really glad that the, the petition is given at the PTO, because in reality, if we were giving it back to the parents, Eric would have to recuse himself from this one. So...
Yeah, he'd miss that on his 59 cents, huh?
He wouldn't be able to vote over 60 cents.
Any other comments? Discussion? Hearing, yes?
I'd like to make a motion, if I could, that the city of Woodland Park refund $1,307.47 to the Colorado Springs Christian School PTO.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, we will take a vote. Cindy?
Thank you. Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. Yes.
I'd just like to follow up. I'd like to say thanks to the city staff, as well as the other, as well as you guys, because you've heard me say it many times, I, obviously, very passionate about Colorado Springs Christian School. I think it's another great organization here in our community, something that sometimes gets left, left out, not on purpose, but for any reason. It just sits out there in its own little area, and I think it's just another great resource that we have available, not, obviously, there's about 100 kids that go there, so it's pretty small compared to the, the regular school district. And I know that, I've talked with Jed, and he's very interested and has worked very closely with the, with, with the school, and finding ways that they can work together and partner on things. So I appreciate it, I appreciate your help, David, because I know you were involved in that, so, and I say that on behalf of my wife, who, I don't even know if she knew this was on the agenda tonight until I texted her, so. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself for the next two items.
Okay. Are you going to come back in then afterwards?
We'll kind of leave it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Not enough time for dinner, hopefully. We'll now move on to the item B of the new business, concerning Resolution Number 745, transferring some water taps to multifamily allotment. And for that, we'll have both Kip and Sally, or?
Just me.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 745 is to transfer 150 taps into the multifamily allotment. And first, I just kind of wanted to give you a quick history, the allotment status, and staff recommendations, and the new status, if that is the case. In 1977, city council authorized the, passed ordinance 703 authorizing the tap management plan. Tap management plan then broke down our taps into two categories, single-family residential taps and multifamily residential taps. And also, it was a way for the city to control tap sales in regards to the city's water supply. Periodic assessments of supply and demand go along with that assessment. First, the first allotment, or the total allotment of taps available is the single-family residential allotment. Currently, there are 106 taps available in that. The second bank, if you will, or allotment for the multifamily, there are 97. These taps are all considered one. The multifamily taps literally come out of the single-family residential tap bank. Currently, there were 97 taps in the multifamily tap allotment bank, and four are committed, excuse me, there's 97 available, four are committed to the Habitat for Humanity project, those are not included in the 97, they're already accounted for. Staff recommendation was to transfer 150 taps from the single-family allotment bank to the multifamily bank, increasing the multifamily bank to 247 taps. This would just be a tool for multifamily projects to grow in our city, or be developed. Any questions?
Questions from council? Yes, Bob?
So this has nothing to do with the 400 extra taps that we had talked about?
No, sir.
So how did you arrive at the number 150?
Since 1997, we have sold 76 multifamily taps. 150 is just a nice round number to add into that total allotment, which I think would support growth for the next couple of years.
Including the next item that we're going to discuss.
Including that one.
Yes, Carol?
Is this a transfer of tap allotments for a particular calendar year only, or out, through some out-year period?
The multifamily allotment bank isn't established every, every year. It's just a, it's a bank that continues, if, if there's development that needs, we could always transfer some into it. Obviously, if those don't get used, they can go back into the single-family residential bank.
And since Councilman Smith has recused himself, how many taps would his project take?
168.
That's the next item we'll be considering. I'll, I'll just make a comment. I think this is, you know, in, in order for us to have the flexibility in our community, this is the way I really like to see these allocations occur, when somebody is looking at a project, trying to make it happen, got to do that in a sequence, and, you know, making sure that you have the water available is, is a big part of that. And, and I think, you know, the fact that we're seeing both of these, you know, on the same agenda, is, is really, from my point of view, the way I'd really like to see it, that you, you kind of know what we're looking to do, and you evaluate it as council members, and we make a decision.
The, the total bank of the 100, 1,006 will be reduced to 856, and that number will grow when we develop more water.
Yes, Bob?
I would, I would second your comments, Dave, because when we make these allocations between the two, we kind of are assuming which way it's going to develop, okay? But that's an assumption. If things, you know, single-family dries up, and it's dried up, and somebody wants to move out in the other, you have to kind of rebalance it. So I, I have no problem with this either.
Any other council comments? Hearing none, then this is administrative action. We can have a motion for this?
Yes, sir.
So I have a motion, if anybody, to consider Resolution Number 745, transferring those 150 taps from a single-family to a multifamily. So moved. I have a motion, second? Have a second from Bob? Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, we will vote.
Thank you. Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And Kip will move on to the next item, Resolution Number 746.
First, go through the request, give a little project background, conditions of approval, staff recommendation, and the developer is here today to answer any questions if you guys so have. First, the request was from Cedarwood Architectural Incorporated. They have requested the 168 water taps for the multifamily apartment project. The location is 311 East Sheridan, which is directly behind Woodcrest Apartments, Eagle Fire Lodge, and the Animal Clinic. A little bit of background on the site, there are approximately 11 mobile homes currently there. It is a 9.17 acre site and those mobile homes would have to be removed. The new project will include seven apartment buildings, one clubhouse. And in December 2011, city council approved a zoning change to allow the density of nine to 20 units per acre for that type of zoning. Conditions of approval, multifamily projects require city council approval. A $200 per dwelling unit fee is required. Those fees must be paid within one year of city council approval. And those taps have to be used within two years of city council approval or paid in full, or they can ask for another extension which would come back before, which would come to city manager or myself to allow that. At that time, another fee for each dwelling unit or water tap is required, making that a total of $400 to reserve those taps if that was the route taken. Resolution 380, adopted in 1997, also established a list of criteria for multifamily water tap allocations. Those were in your staff report and to our knowledge, the majority of them have been met and still to be determined on two items, the proposal for affordable housing and if they were handicap accessible. All other criteria were met, taps are available, we can provide water and wastewater treatment capacity, police and fire emergency services, and the list goes on. I can go through it all if you would like. Staff's recommendation to support the 168 multifamily dwelling unit allocation. And just so you're aware, if all taps were utilized, there would be a remaining 79 water taps left in the multifamily category. Any questions?
If, and I think it's probably in there, but I just need to ask the question. So, if this project were not to happen, then when the taps expire, they just go back into the, eventually, if there's not an extension, back into the regular multifamily category?
Yes, sir.
And the money that's been paid, what happens to that?
If they don't pay within the one year, the taps will go back and there's no money exchanged. If there are, if they are paid and nothing happens, that $200 is then forfeited to the city.
Okay. Yes, Carol?
Times the 168.
Yes, Carol?
And the criteria for multifamily tap allocation, are we required to, or is the applicant required to meet each? Or are we, do we have the discretion to accept that not all of them will be met?
I would have to defer to Sally.
We do get to hear from Sally.
These criteria are not absolutes. They do not need to meet all 11 of them. They were purposely put in place for council to be able to sort of evaluate whether these are good projects for you to allocate these taps to. Thanks.
Other questions from council, comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for resolution 746.
So moved.
Second. Hearing a motion and a second, any further discussion? Then we'll take a vote.
Thank you. Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And our last item on the new business is concerning investment review committee report. And for that, we'll turn to Cindy again.
Thank you.
Somebody go get Eric and bring him in. Eric, let it be known that Eric has returned to the city council.
Thank you. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce one of the members of our Community Investment Review Committee, Darwin Nakarado, to review this staff report for you and present it and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Welcome Darwin. And usually, when we're seeing Darwin in front of us, he's bringing us some good news. And if you'll just, for the record, state your name and address and proceed from there.
I'm Darwin Nakarado, 410 Craig Court here in Woodland Park, Colorado. Mayor Turley, council and staff, excuse me. My wife says stand up tall and straight and smile. Actually, I'm just kidding. She is watching on the streaming video, though. It's my pleasure to present to you the staff report on our committee for Community Investment Review. This year, we were fortunate to receive a $2,500 grant again from El Pomer Foundation. This will be the fourth year that we've received such a grant. The first grant was in '09 in the amount of $10,000 and then '10, '11, and now in '12. It has decreased over those years from $10,000 now down to the $2,500 that we're considering this year. And that is primarily because El Pomer has thought that our grantees were appropriate and they've granted funds directly to some of those, which is a good thing. We're very pleased about that. In fact, there were two El Pomer grants awarded during the Waldo Canyon fire, one to the Community Cupboard and one to the Teller County Regional Animal Shelter. We met at the end of last month and spent some considerable time. I guess I should introduce the committee. There are three members of the committee here with us that I see. I'm a low man on a totem pole because Councilman Schaefer is on the committee. City Clerk Cindy Morse is on the committee and I guess that leaves me to do the presenting.
And just go ahead and tell us who the other committee members are.
Sure. Sue Griswold and Lenny Stevenson.
Okay.
And I at least had Sue here last time to support me and we asked her to do the wave for us. It's pretty hard for one person, but.
Hmm.
I know, I know. This fund was established specifically for community assistance and so that limits the number of grantees that we could have considered for this. Frankly, they don't even know they're being considered, the way this actually works. So, we went through the list of grantees and people that we thought were organizations that we thought were worthy. First of all, we allocated the $2,500 and then wanted to request of council that we can also match those funds this time because we left $2,500 available from our last go-around in this budget year for just such an occasion. And it works out very, very well so that we can then grant a total of $5,000 with your approval at the rate of $1,000 apiece to each of these fine organizations, Little Chapel and Divide for food distribution, the Storehouse to provide direct aid and food distribution, the Teller Senior Coalition for their Ensure Meal Supplement Program, the Northeast Teller County Fire District Volunteer Firefighter Program to support those volunteers who provided assistance to those who needed help during the Waldo Canyon fire. And lastly, but not least, Help the Need for Direct Client Aid. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, I'll just, just, again, making sure for the record, so the $2,500 that's coming out of the city revenues is, in fact, money that was in the originally approved community investment fund?
Correct.
Okay? Any questions, comments from council? Yes, Bob?
Quite often, these granting agencies will look more favorably if, in fact, there is a matching grant.
Precisely.
Was that case made to El Pomer?
It wasn't and we can't wait to tell them what you did.
No, that's the point I was going to make. If you didn't tell them in advance, maybe if you tell them after the fact, next year they might give you some more.
I should add to that comment and I think you're absolutely right, Councilman Carlson. I believe that, you know, when we discussed this, we thought that it would be just perfect for what we're trying to do here, to try to see if we could get this amount raised again back up to previous levels, five and $10,000 kind of levels from previous years by assuring that this is what we did. I guess I should also point out, as we've done each time we've gotten this, one of the reasons El Pomer has chosen Woodland Park to make this grant is that we have a standing committee for community investment. That was one of their key criteria, that we had someone, that we had an organization, a committee, that was already capable of handling these kinds of decisions and it seems to work very well. They're pleased with that. As I say, they've stolen some of our grantees, so.
In 2008, I believe, El Pomer made an unsolicited contribution to the city of Woodland Park of about $10,000. Because we did have a community investment program in place, they relied on us to make that distribution. It went through the community investment process. The next year, after we reported to them what we had done with that money on time, they went directly to three or four of the recipients and gave them assistance. You'll recall, 2008 was a tough economic year. They did the same thing in 2009, but they bypassed the city and went straight to those organizations that had used the money just as they said they were going to. In 2010, yet again, they came through the city and allowed us to do that distribution. They did the same thing in 2011. And this one in 2012 was as a direct result, I believe, of the economic issues associated with the Waldo Canyon fire. So, again, it was unsolicited. But one of the reasons why they keep coming to us with these great funds is because we have a process in place and because we know how to manage that and we know how to get the best bang for their buck. So, this, they have absolutely no idea that we're considering matching it. That's the community investment committee's recommendation to you. We have the funds available and it is the committee's recommendation and the staff's recommendation that we match El Pomer's generous gift and help these folks out so that they can help others.
And I'll just make an additional comment that previously, the way, let's just say, we really appreciate the committee and the way it operates. There has been times that this was negotiated amongst city council members at city council meetings and this is a much, much better process and we do have a council member that participates in that. I believe previously George, was George the George Parkhurst and, you know, and, you know.
And John DeVoe also.
Yeah. So, that's worked really well and any comments or questions from council?
Mayor Turley, I have a comment. Please know that each recipient makes a report directly to El Pomer of how they use that money to include receipts. So, this is a very well documented process.
Yes, Bob?
For the most part, these are unsolicited. Is that, you know, we're going to be reporting back to them, of course, that now we're matching. And if this is only a fraction of the charities that we give money to. So, I'm just wondering if we can say anything to encourage you, solicit money, say it's going to be, possibly it's going to be matched based on this experience you just had now and see what we can do next year.
Absolutely. Great point. We have, by definition, of course, limited the grantees in this request to specifically community, you know, directly related to community benefit groups, whereas the overall CIC recommendation usually includes a lot of other nonprofit but worthy organizations as well. We have actually, as a committee, though, tried to really emphasize the community benefit type groups since, really, since the beginning of the economic downturn. But I think your point is absolutely well taken.
If no other comments or questions from council, I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Having a motion and second, any further discussion? Cindy?
Thank you. Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Turley?
Yes.
Bravetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And I would just like to, again, thank Darwin and the members of his committee on this. You do an outstanding job with this and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have no one signed up for public comment on items not on the agenda, but if anybody has one.
Figured Debbie might.
Welcome, Debbie. I think there might be something coming up that she might like to talk about.
On the heels of the presentation tonight of the USA Pro Cycle Challenge, the energy that David spoke about in the community is about to be repeated. It will start at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, this Saturday, the 22nd. Several of you have responded that you will be there and it is an honor that you're going to come to help us with the official keg tapping for our 15th Annual Rocky Mountain Oktoberfest. We add the plus to it because we do have two stages of music. We have our German music, which will be inside, and our alternative rock, jazz, and country and western, which is outside on the pavilion. We do have alternative food other than just German food. We'll have beef brisket this year, pulled pork, we'll have some schnitzel. We do have a Guinness brought this year as well. Lots of things for the kids to do. We've changed things around in the kids' area. So, we will have two full days of excitement in our community. I want to thank city manager David Butterey, who has worked with Fort Carson. We will have two Army vehicles up here onsite as well. The kids can touch, parents can touch as well. It's just going to be two great days. Weather's going to cooperate and we hope that you'll come and spend a couple of days with us. And we promised Chief Larson to make everyone behave.
And the weather forecast for Saturday is a high of 66 and sunshine and for Sunday, a high of 72 and sunshine.
That's good beer drinking weather. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. So, we'll move into council reports. I've got a couple of things, surprise, surprise. We didn't have a meeting, was that on the 6th of, whenever it was, earlier September. But since then, I've done several things. It's amazing, as mayor, one of the benefits you get is to get to go do some things. Yesterday or day before, I guess it was day before, I went out and spent a couple hours at the hospital and got a tour of there and what's going on. And at some point in the future, they'll come and suggest that they come and do an update to council. I found that to be very worthwhile and it's a great, it is great having that hospital here in our community. And I think the more that we can let people know what's going on, the better. On the Pikes Peak Regional Mayor's Caucus that I participate in with mayors in the Pikes Peak region, that is really a, kind of a high level looking at major issues in the Pikes Peak region. We've been working the percentage of funding that comes from the Colorado Department of Transportation, CDOT, and kind of, we had a meeting with, well, we'd had it one a couple of months ago and then on Monday, we had a meeting up at CDOT headquarters in Denver with Don Hunt, who's the executive director, our transportation commissioner. And we're just talking about percentages of money and I found that to be very useful. They're, you know, Don Hunt's really pushing the envelope and trying to change some things in the way that they do the business and allocations. And I think what we want is to see kind of what happens over the next few months and then some of the things that they're trying to do. They're actually spending some time with the Departments of Transportation in some other states to look at the way some future monies are brought to bear. So, I think that's pretty interesting. Pikes Peak Area Council of Governments approved the transportation plan for, I think, water tour with Colorado Springs Utilities. We actually went down and saw the Southern Delivery System, that Colorado Springs Utilities is working, has all the permitting done to bring water from Pueblo Reservoir. They've got their hole in the dam, and waters actually can flow in and out, and they've got about 30 miles, I think, of pipeline laid, and then we went up to Salida for a ceremony. Now that they've got all the permits approved for the Southern Delivery System, the Colorado Springs Utility has lifted through legal channels in the water court their claim to building a dam north of Buena Vista. If you've ever been over in the northern Arkansas River Valley, you know, there's been signs and things for the last 30, 40 years about, don't dam Colorado Springs water, don't build a dam and take our valley. And at Salida, it was pretty interesting, they brought in a shredder, and they had individuals there who were the original people on that committee, and they shredded the original documents to that claim for water, to take it out up there. They're still gonna take the water, but it's gonna be taken out of, it's gonna flow on down and be taken out of Pueblo Reservoir. So that was all pretty good, and then we went up to, went up to Turquoise Lake and Twin Lakes, the exit of the Home State Tunnel, about half of our water, Kip, you correct me on anything I get wrong, about half of our water comes out of the Home State and that system, and is brought over here and, you know, supplemented with our wells, and it was a great time. Kip probably has had enough of his mayor, we pretty much sat next to each other on the bus, and I'm gonna tell you, these guys, Colorado Springs Utilities, know how to take advantage of a captive audience, because from the second you get on the bus, they are briefing, and there's PowerPoint slides going on the little TV screens on the bus, and it pretty much doesn't end, it's a two-day trip. But a lot of, there was state senators, state members of the House, several mayors, lots of utility folks, and I thought it was an absolutely exceptional trip to be able to go see that. Kip, you have anything you'd like to add, or?
I just, I have one thing. In one day, the Southern Delivery will deliver about 78 million gallons of water. That's about 77% of what we use in a year as far as augmentation water. They will deliver that in one day.
Wow.
So it's kinda a little interesting fact there.
And something I didn't know was when they built that new pump station out in Divide, because that increased their velocity of water through the Home State Pipeline, that doubled the amount of water that they could carry through the Home State Pipeline. And of course, most of that water ends up up in Rampart Reservoir.
Right.
As a starting point. People don't know that. But it was really a great trip. Also, at the end of August, had the opportunity to go up in the Burn area, again with several mayors and other folks, and seeing the work, the recovery work that they're doing relative to trying to slow down the water flow during rainstorms. And that included the mulching, shredding that they were doing of trees that are up there, and also the large amount of straw that's being brought in so they can control that runoff into Rampart Reservoir. Just pretty amazing, some of the stuff goes on. And on both the high water country trip and the trip up into the Waldo Canyon Burn area, I got to spend a little time with Jerry Meyer, if you remember Jerry? And from the briefings down in Colorado Springs, she's the operational manager of the blah, 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 Pikes Peak, San Isabel, Comanche Grasslands, a very amazing lady. And that's, oh, I will add one more thing. Pikes Peak Rotary Club is a part of, Pikes Peak Rotary Endowment has been working on identifying businesses, because Rotary is business-based, businesses in our area that were negatively affected by the Waldo Canyon Fire, and businesses had to apply, we got the word out, and I'd like to report that last week, they came up and gave, and our club is a part of that, a $2,000 check to the pantry down in Green Mountain Falls to help, and they also went to Bad Rock Automotive in Woodland Park, and another $2,000 check. And today, they visited another business in Green Mountain Falls that I don't remember, and gave another $2,000 check, and also to the cellar door, Ben Caperton, and presented them with a $2,000 check today. And again, they've looked through, these people, businesses had actually opened up their books and show the impact of the fire in order to be awarded that money. And we actually did that, they opened their books, but they didn't know that check was coming, so that was a very nice surprise for those, and those businesses, and as a member of Rotary, and I'm very proud of what we've done there. We have several events coming up tomorrow, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 o'clock. It's the next to the last farmer's market of the season. I think the farmer's market's been outstanding this year. Also tomorrow, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., we have the third Friday Art Walk in downtown Woodland Park. Those are a lot of fun. And at 7:00 o'clock tomorrow evening, as we said earlier, is the football game at the high school, and those are really a good time. I enjoy those. I always liked football. As Debbie indicated, this weekend is the 15th Annual Rocky Mountain Oktoberfest at the Cultural Center in the green. Great music, great food, and a lot of fun, really looking forward to that. And then next Friday night is another Woodland Park home football game, and that's against Pueblo Central. And that's all I have for tonight, that's more than enough. Eric?
Nothing to say.
Gary? Bob?
Yeah. Last October, or November, whatever, I made reservations to use frequent flyer miles to go on my 40th anniversary vacation. That was before I ever knew I was gonna be on the Woodland Aquatic Project Board of Directors or City Council. So unfortunately, or fortunately for me, I will not be here the next two meetings, and I will be probably inaccessible to emails too, for most of that time, and the rest of the time, my wife will probably tell me not to read the emails. So anyway, I just wanna let everybody know where I was gonna be over the next month I get back, the 31st of October.
Raring to go.
Okay. When you come back, we'll be getting started hot and heavy on the 2013 budget, but you'll be back for the majority of those discussions and the important sessions, most important sessions that we have. Terry?
Yeah. And this is for Bill and Suzanne. I finally received those letters from Larry, and I got the pleasure of working with Bill and his staff, and Bruce Vanderpool on a quick little project over at Meadowwood Park, and due to a combined effort, I think everything went real well, and everybody's really happy, so please pass it on. And I did tell Bill this, and I will announce, Bruce had two young men, I think, through the summer, that took care of the, most of the greenery, other than the baseball field, which we don't have to water. And in the 20-some years that I've lived in this community and played and participated over at that park, that is absolutely the best I have ever seen it. Those two young men, I guess, really worked their tails off and got it done, so my hat's off to you, your staff, and those two young men.
Well, thank you, and just to clarify with Councilman Harrison's talking about, we got a new window at the concession stand, through his efforts with his suppliers and his business helped facilitate getting that nice new window in there. We've got a nice brass plaque coming to acknowledge that contribution and donation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you asked me to give the council an update on what is happening now with the Downtown Development Authority Board, and as my last task, I would like to report, there was an emergency meeting on Friday of the board, and held an executive session to discuss a couple of personnel issues and some infrastructure issues, and those were resolved. But I can report that on Monday of this week, the closing was held for the DDA property that was transferred to the Rodarmals, is that how they pronounce their name?
Yes, ma'am.
And the Woodland Hardware Project is raring to go now. The projects at Tammerack Center, is that what we're calling the piece of property, are on schedule. Bill, do you have any updates on what's going on with infrastructure improvements up there?
Well, Shady Lane Storm Drain System is continuing under construction. Lamb Plumbing and Excavating, a local business has been working with us to put that in, and things are progressing smartly on that, and we hope to have that finished up shortly. The sewer connection, and Kip, you can jump in, is getting ready to start here just about any day for that project.
Will those, will either one of those be open before Christmas? Are we not gonna be able to accomplish that, either the auto parts store or the Family Dollar?
I really can't speak to their individual construction schedules at this point.
Okay.
Sally, do you have, do you, are they?
They tend to be open for Christmas.
Right now, they seem to be on schedule for that to happen.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it, Carol, and appreciate the, you know, your work on both city council and on the DDA board.
I'm not dead, but.
We know that, don't worry, you hit your next desk. John?
Well, I'm happy to announce that the third townhome of the Habitat Forest Edge Project was dedicated this last Sunday, so we now have three families in that Phase One building, and we're scheduled to start on Phase Two then next spring.
Wonderful, that's great. I'm gonna add one before I turn it over to David, and this is really for, it's for the whole staff, but those that do it will know. Woodland Park this summer has, I think, looked really, really good. You know, you look around town, I've lived here for about 24 years, and I think Woodland Park presents itself the best I've ever seen it, and that just doesn't happen. It takes a staff, it takes a lot of hard work, it takes dedication, you know, everybody, so many people just take all the weed eating, the mowing, and all of those things for granted, and I don't. I look at, and I'll tell you another thing, when we, when we did the water tour, and Kip will tell you, when that bus, we came back through Woodland Park, and as we started, well, just before we got to the hospital, we were out there, and I was just, there was elk out in the bed, so, so, you know, I could talk about all, you know, seeing the elk, and then talking about, you know, the various businesses, and the way we, and I gotta tell you, it was one of those days that, you know, the air is fresh and clean, everything just looked, it looked sacred, and, of course, Bill's, Bill and his staff have a lot to do with that, and it's really the whole staff. And I was, you know, sometimes you just have to step back and really smell the roses and appreciate what we have, and I do appreciate it. Okay? David?
Let's see if the city attorney has any reports this evening.
I'm sorry, Aaron.
No problem, Mayor, I do have a report. I actually am sharing my time with city clerk Cindy Morse, and we will provide a report to you on the distance requirements for liquor license applicants and holders, and Cindy is going to start, and then I would be happy to answer any questions, should you have any, after Cindy makes her report.
Thank you, Erin. While David is distributing the map, I'll give you a couple of background pieces. There are currently 32 licensed, liquor licensed establishments within the city limits. Second point is that state law prohibits any location to be licensed if it is within 500 feet of a school. Recall, we had that discussion a meeting or two ago. Also note that you keep hearing from us that Woodland Park is a home rule city, and can amend the requirements contained in the state statute by ordinance. Indeed, we did that in 1985, specifically for hotel and restaurant licensed establishments. We amended the 500-foot requirement to 400 feet. We've prepared a map for you detailing each of the licensed establishments in red. They go all the way from at the top of your map, with the golf course, all the way down to Walmart. Note that we also included each school in blue, including the new school, recently approved school, in the downtown core area. We also measured, just with the GIS system, a 500-foot buffer in the light blue, so that you can see what that looks like. While it appears that there are three establishments within that 500-foot buffer, they are not. The method of measurement is specifically described in the state statutes, and each one of those establishments is more than 500 feet from the school. So, the city attorney and I have reviewed these, want you to take a look at those. There are options. Options can be to review these things with you on a case-by-case base, a basis, based on applications for licenses. It is possible for you to designate that a specific area in our community, perhaps the downtown core, might have a reduced or eliminated distance requirement, or perhaps specific types of licenses within any area would have a reduced or perhaps non-existent distance requirement. So the bottom line is, there is no need to take any immediate action, but you now have the tools to understand where the licensees are, where the schools are, and you know what the rules are for distance. So applicants that come in to visit Suzanne and I, to find out what it takes to get a liquor license, we always talk to them about where they're thinking about locating, or if they're just transferring an existing establishment, a licensed premise already. So we can begin there, and if we start to see, or if it's council's desire, that we take a real good look at that downtown core, we can certainly do that, not your pleasure. What questions may I answer?
My first question is, within that, the Old Church Square, I'm still confused, those establishments are within the buffer, or they are not?
They are not within the buffer, Carol, because they were issued long before that school was approved, so they are grandfathered.
Okay.
But any buildings?
They're there, they just don't count.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
But any, but any future, for instance, Joni's Deli, they come in, they would be
precluded based on our current regulations?
Apparently, that's correct.
But we could modify that.
And we can modify that with a simple ordinance.
And that one, if I remember right correctly from the last meeting, it's actually if they're selling during the hours that school is in session.
You know, we talked about that for the special events that are held at the park, and you're right, the distance requirement goes away for special events that are held in the evening or when the school is closed.
What's the problem, waiting that now for that circled area there, which is?
There isn't one, we just have to do it by ordinance.
I would suggest maybe we do something like that, because that's where the park is, and if we do have events there, you know, that have liquor, like wine and stuff like that, we have that occasionally, why don't we just take some action just to do that?
We could, by state law, we are also actually a municipal-owned land, doesn't even fall within the 500-foot requirement. So any premises of a, that will be issued a liquor license, so, you know, somehow that is the best definition of the premise, so on a municipal-owned land is not subject to the 500-foot rule, so.
So for the park, Gary, that's correct. For perhaps other establishments within the downtown core, we might wanna consider that later.
Well, we could do that when we get one that's applicable, we could go ahead and work that into at the same time, and maybe consider that.
Yeah, and in addition, and I think this is along what Councilman Bravetto is asking, the, a type of school, the distance requirement can specify certain types of schools that would be subject to that distance requirement, and can eliminate types of schools from that distance requirement. So there's, again, as city clerk Morse said, there's just a lot of option and flexibility.
Yes, sir.
You know, I would suggest that we move forward and put a ordinance together. I think we should look at excluding, I think we have a lot of maps that we've kinda got developed through the DDA or whatnot, that kinda define what the downtown core is. I even look at the Woodland Park High School and that buffer, and it's encroaching or getting very close to Highway 24. I can understand why we don't necessarily want an establishment right across the street, but I think having establishments in our downtown core, and what I don't want to see happen is somebody walks in and says, "Hey, I want to open a new business and serve wine and beer. What do I need to do?" "Oh, well, you're in this special area. We've got to amend and go through an ordinance process." And somebody goes, "You know, I just don't have time to deal with that." And they decide to go invest their money somewhere else. So I would suggest we be proactive, take care of it now. When we approved the school, we kind of did it, we had to do it in a hurry, so to speak, because of the timing of school starting. And one of the reasons I supported moving forward was because we were going to clean this up. So I suggest we clean it up and not wait for, we can, so that's my feeling.
That's what we're, that's what I'm hearing. Yeah, that's what we're hearing from. Take care of that little circle now. That's what we're hearing from Councilman Bravetto also. Yes, Bob?
And I understand too, there's an ordinance that says we can't sell liquor on, in public parks, or public parks. But we're always making the exception to the rule for every event we have.
Are you saying it should be free in public parks? I like that idea.
But I would say, consider it when you're redoing this ordinance, making the exception to Memorial Park.
The, I believe the existing, I don't know if it's an ordinance or not, but we don't allow alcohol on public parks unless the council approves it. So there's a special event permit process, and I think that's what we want to keep. I think that's the appropriate way to do it.
Okay. I wasn't quite clear on what that was.
And I think we've got enough direction as staff. We wanted to bring you back the latest. Now we've got your guidance, and we'll move forward with bringing something back to you to clean this up now.
Sounds good.
Are you talking about cleaning up that circled area?
Well, I think we're going to actually look at probably the whole 24 corridor. You know, just the areas that seem to make sense where things might go. We can't predict them all, but I think we can get pretty close.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Aaron, anything else?
Nothing further.
I do have a question for Aaron, however, since you're here. I do read the CML newsletter, and a couple issues back, there was a report on Supreme Court Appeals Court decision concerning the sunshine law. Okay? There was a group that should have not communicated with each other, but did, you know, multiple, you know, all emails back and forth. Supreme Court said they were allowed to do that. So at some point, if you could kind of dissect that decision and let us know what it means for us.
Happy to, thank you.
Okay. David, other?
On behalf of the Cruise Above the Clouds Committee, I want to share a brief report on their September 8th Cruise Above the Clouds. Historically, they have about 200, 210 cars that show up to the event. Last year, you'll recall, we had Dennis Gage from My Classic Car, and there were over 300 cars here. And that was shown many times throughout the country and overseas. This past year, on September 8th, we hosted somewhere between 250 and 270 cars for the Cruise Above the Clouds. And on behalf of that committee...
They wanted me to present to the mayor a framed plaque and their appreciation for what the city does.
It was, for those of you that weren't there, it was an absolutely gorgeous day. I would say this would look great on a wall at my house, but in fact, I will give this back to David to hang in a prominent place. But it was a great day, and also the mayor had the opportunity to do a mayor's choice. And that was a lot of fun that morning. And again, one of those bennies you get is for being mayor. And again, you take all of them that you can. But it was a beautiful day and a beautiful event, and a lot of people, so.
And that's all.
Anything else? Darwin would like to add one more.
And I'm sure Dave wanted to point out that Cruise Above the Clouds is a very proud recipient of community investment funds that has returned at least 10 times over as it circulates through the city and the various donations that Cruise Above the Clouds makes. And oh, by the way, to answer your unspoken but intended question, I'm sure, Mayor Turley, yes, I already have a pen. Thank you.
Sally, I didn't know she wasn't going to report. But I saw everybody's report, of course. And there was an announcement in there about the state demographer on the 25th. I won't be able to attend that, but she's going to talk all about Woodland Park, you know, in the future and all of that kind of stuff. If you could make that report available to the rest of the council, that would be great.
Yeah, that's going to be Tower County, this area, I'm not sure, but I know it's all of Feller is on that. Okay, I'll say that.
Oh, one other thing, sorry, under my previous thing. Part of the goals and objectives, Dave and I kind of were tasked to look at the city's sister-city program thingy. And I've been very busy doing other things since then. But on vacation, I was going to ask one of the, talk to one of the city councils on my itinerary, would they would like, would they like to be a sister-city with Woodland Park? This happens to be a new New Zealand, everybody that visits New Zealand goes through that town to Milford Sound. If we had a sign, "Woodland Park, Colorado," at the entrance to that city, that would be great. So anyway, I just want to let you know what I was potentially going to do.
Don't come at us, but check it out.
Yeah, I'll check it out.
Okay, you're going to New Zealand?
Going to New Zealand, all the Southeastic Islands and all that.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.